Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Chair Greg Cooksma of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission, calling to order the Planning Commission meeting of November 18th. That is now 5:01 PM. Welcome to everybody. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Can you hear us, Commissioner Brown? You're on mute. Commissioner Brown is here. Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
And just to note for the record, Commissioner Sol is unable to attend this evening. From the city staff, we have Michelle Thomas, and Carl DeCimas, and our two consultants from Burke are Dawn Couch and Andrew Bjorn. Welcome. So first order of business on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our November 4th meeting. So I'm opening the floor for any comments or corrections. Otherwise, I'm willing to take a motion.
Move for approval.
A second that.
The move by Bradbury and seconded by Grayna. Any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving along, we only have one agenda item this evening, albeit a big one. And before I turn it over, I just would like to say thanks to our consultants and to the staff. I really appreciate the work that you did on this since our first meeting discussing this a few weeks ago, taking all of the comments and feedback that we had provided to you and requesting some additional information. And I was impressed by the thoroughness of your report and your responsiveness to the concerns and questions raised by all the planning commissions. So before you dive into it, I just would like to say thanks.
Thank you.
And with that, Carl, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair. And you kind of stole my thunder there because I was going to say that, what, you know, I think what the consultants have brought forward is looking really good and, you know, they've, they've listened to what was, what was talked about at the last meeting and really tried to synthesize that into the report. And so this is the, and this is more the full version of the report, you know, rather than just sort of a fiscal analysis piece that we were looking at previously. So, you know, obviously now there's a lot more meat on the bone that we're reviewing. So we've really gotten far down the road with this thing, which is really great. And I would also like to say I'm impressed with the work that Burke has done and Andrew and Dawn and their team. So thank you guys very much. And so the purpose of the meeting this evening is to review this draft report that's been presented by Burke. And, you know, there's, we're not in a really legislative process here, you know, so there's not necessarily kind of any, not really any sort of road that we're following here, you know, we can kind of make this up a little bit as we go. To that end, of course, we do have to get it to council at some point. And so, you know, the hope would be to get it to council soon. But I also just want to state that we don't want to, you know, rush the planning commission either or have you feel that you're being rushed in any manner. We want to make sure that you are able to consider this in your own time, you know, within reasonable amounts of time. And so, you know, by the end of this meeting, I think, you know, maybe there's some kind of discussion about what the planning commission, how the planning commission feels about this document. Is it, you know, are they comfortable with the council considering it as is? Are there amendments that maybe should go up and we look at it something like a, like a recommendation from planning commission with some amendments or some proposed or suggested changes to what's in the text currently? Or, you know, or are there some glaring items that planning commissioners feel they'd like staff and the consultant's team to look at a little more specifically and come back to the planning commission with some, with some changes or some additional information? So anyway, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as a statement to to the planning commission, just so you understand, you know, from our, from staff's perspective, this is kind of where we're at. And those are the expectations. The expectations are that there's a lot of options on the table. And so, you know, we should just, while we're going through, while Andrew and Dawn are going through the presentation and talking about this, and as we're going through any kind of question and answer, just kind of keeping that in the back of your head that, you know, which one of these options are we feeling comfortable with? So. I think with that, unless there's any questions from the commission from me relative to any of those items, the sort of process stuff, I would turn it over to Andrew and Dawn in their capable hands to lead us through this this evening. Seeing none?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I will do that. All right, Dawn, Andrew, please take it away.
Thank you. So Andrew, you know, thank you for having us this evening. We're really looking forward to this conversation. And I think Carl kind of laid out our hopes for the conversation tonight. So we always enjoy having time to work with planning commissions. You guys are on the ground and do a lot more of the nitty gritty work around long range planning for cities. So your expertise is really valued here. I'm going to just kind of go over what we're prepared to present tonight. And Andrew's going to do the bulk of the presentation. So here we are. Andrew, can you advance us? So you've reviewed the kind of the work in progress. We've submitted all the draft analysis and kind of the emerging framework and some of our initial recommendations. So what we're going to do tonight is Andrew's going to walk through a lot of that analysis and talk about the potential annexation impacts to the city. He could, what I'm hoping to do is that, given it's a lot of information that he'll kind of mostly walk through, we're happy to take clarifying questions during the presentation, but we'd like to hold kind of like bigger discussion items to the end. He'll also review the guidelines for, the emerging guidelines for review of annexation proposals as they come in. And then some of the initial kind of recommendations we're developing around an annexation strategy for the city. So that's what we'll present tonight. I'm going to pass it over to Andrew, who's going to kind of touch here first on the purpose of the overall project and then get into the draft analysis. Mr. Bjorn.
Great, thanks, Dawn. So just as a reminder of what we've been discussing, what we're looking at here is developing out a set of guidelines and it's really, you know, the intent is really in two different directions. One is that there are petitions that come forward for annexation and there does need to be a consistent way of evaluating them. So council should have something in hand so that they know, you know, whether to move forward with an annexation or not, whether there are changes that are necessary or additional planning. And then there may be some times when certain annexations need to be pursued by the city. And in cases like that, what would be the conditions that would be necessary? And, you know, is there additional planning attached to that? So as we go through, we're going to be addressing both of these. And, I mean, you've already seen the entire document, so that kind of gets to the, you already know what's to come with that, but. So for the analysis, what we were looking at is, you know, characterizing the UGAs and focusing in on the fiscal impacts of annexation. And we do have a much more quantitative approach to kind of the yearly operations and maintenance budgets. And then something a little bit more high level for infrastructure. We did also talk about other impacts of annexation such as required additional parkland that would be necessary to meet level of service standards, other issues like that. But we wanted to set the stage and going forward for, you know, how we took those, how to take those and, you know, look at annexation decision making guidelines and then, you know, bring it forward to a bit of a strategy as well. So I'm going to go through these really quickly. I mean, tables are always hard to present to. It's just more of here is the data, but I think, I think the one thing to highlight with this is just that the UGAs are pretty extensive, that it represents almost more than half of the current assessed value of Gig Harbor. Well over half, you know, of the, you know, gross acres and net acres. I mean, we're looking at substantive areas could be added to the city in the longer term. As in addition to that, it's also a substantive amount of development. It's primarily looking at, you know, housing units and institutional uses, the prison, the elementary school and high school in Purdy. That's something that we want to keep in mind here that, you know, a lot of what we're drawing in is primarily residential neighborhoods. And that's, that's something that we'll discuss in a little bit. But it's not as much development capacity for the future. In some of the examples that we had provided to you before, such as with Ferndale and Bellingham, they were looking at annexation in part to meet their growth targets. And in this case with Gig Harbor, it's different where, you know, in certain areas, there isn't going to be as substantive growth in certain neighborhoods. Like Canterwood, for example, is almost completely built out. And annexation is much less about growing and more of just recognizing that certain areas are at urban densities. So one of the other points to make here as well is that as we're going through and looking at the necessary infrastructure, there were a lot of areas that would really require additional servicing. And it's primarily, there is some need for additional sewer servicing, but stormwater, stormwater infrastructure and drainage are pretty big issues in some key areas. So as we're moving forward and thinking about some of the costs, we don't, we haven't necessarily priced out all of the possible interventions that would be needed to, you know, address all of the drainage problems in certain neighborhoods. But we did want to flag some of these areas as where that is a little bit more of a concern going forward. So just very briefly, when we were looking at both revenue and operating costs, with respect to revenue changes, a lot of it was based on just looking at population and employment. And within these areas, it's primarily with population, but you know, we also wanted to account for the fact that Gig Harbor has a significant employment center, has significant employment, and that some city services are related to supporting that as well. So. But, you know, we do also take into account assessed value for property taxes in the, in the UGAs as well as sales taxes. And those are relatively minor. I mean, there's some in Purdy. There's like, there are restaurants in, there's food services at Madrona Links and a restaurant in the Canterwood Golf, the Canterwood Country Club there. But for the most part, the primary driver, you know, the bigger amounts of revenue are more associated with property taxes. And this does, we will, as we'll see in a minute, I mean, that does have an impact on the results that we have. So with operating cost changes, there are three different categories in terms of how we approach this. With city streets, we have an idea about the length of roadway in each of the UGAs. So getting an understanding of, you know, average cost of maintenance per mile is the best approach to deal with that. For police protection, that's something where we had a conversation with the police chief to get a better understanding about his perspective on staffing levels that would be necessary for covering the individual areas. One thing to note about that is that I know that they're looking at a, at a resources study for the police department in the near future. And that's obviously going to have an impact on the expected costs, that that would provide a better and more fine resolution estimate. But for the purposes of this analysis, we wanted to identify those areas that would require, you know, additional officers to be hired or even transferred over from Pierce County Sheriff. And then finally, with other municipal expenditures, this may be something that we need to adjust, but what we were looking at is it's primarily looking at where the city would need to staff up. If we're looking at community development, administration, parks, if there are new residents that come into town, what are the staffing, what staffing levels would need to change to address those, that additional demand for city services? Now, we had debated a few different ways of looking at kind of current conditions and future conditions. And one challenge that we had is that we don't exactly know where growth is going to go. We tried to determine a few different ways of portioning growth between the two, between the 11 different UGAs. And that really didn't come up with a lot of satisfying information. So what we wanted to do was to put an upper limit on what would be the impacts at full buildout? If everything was developed out, what would be the additional burden on the city to take on these areas? And if we're thinking about kind of the kind of bounding what the impacts would be, that's likely to be kind of the impacts and the, that's going to be strongly related to what the impacts would be in the longer term. So I'm with respect to looking at the current fiscal impacts, there are certain areas where the costs are relatively low. And again, there may be an adjustment that we need to make to this. However, generally, the magnitudes are not are not massive. It's not as if, there are a number of areas where it's a relatively small net impact. There are certain cases and it's, I mean, Purdy is one example of an area where there may be a deficit and then with the additional infrastructure that would be required. And, you know, some of the land uses that are there, we'll get into that later, that may not necessarily be as reasonable as well as you, I always get this wrong, Carl. You, you cut.
Bousatch.
Bousatch, thank you. I swear I will remember it next time. I, so with Bousatch, that in particular has a significant deficit. And that's primarily related to the need for additional police coverage. So as we were talking to the chief of police, he had referenced the fact that if that area was annexed, it would be likely that the police would need to respond to certain calls for coverage. And there's relatively little revenue since the prison itself is a public use and is not going to pay significant property taxes. So so that's just looking at kind of the year to year impacts. Now that's going to change. And there is one issue in that because of the caps in, because of restrictions on increasing property tax levies over time, there is that issue with relying on residential property taxes for revenue. On the other hand, I mean, there are also other characteristics that can potentially balance that out, increased and increased tax base available for special levies, for example. So we wanted to make a note of these and highlight some of the potential impacts, but not necessarily, you know, try to project them out because there are a lot of other issues that are involved. So. But in looking at the an additional part of the ledger, as I had mentioned before, capital and infrastructure are going to be important for looking at annexation. And we were primarily relying on existing information. We're not scoped out to do extensive engineering studies of what the potential costs be for extending out, say, forced mains into the Reed Road area. And it's likely that even if we were, you know, the scale of the project is such where, you know, you'd get it, you'd need to get another assessment anyway. So we wanted to keep this high level, acknowledging that this is work that would need to be done as part of planning for future annexation. But we did want to identify that there are certain areas where extensions to sewer infrastructure would be required. The primary area that we've highlighted is Reed Road. But, you know, there is also acknowledgement that there are other areas where sewer infrastructure would need to be extended in part because there are septic issues in certain UGAs. This is something that the city may also need to cover anyway, just simply because the UGAs are also the sewer service area. But this is something to consider going forward for costs. As I had mentioned before, in addition, you know, stormwater and drainage are also an issue in some notable areas. As we had conducted a review and talked with Public Works, you know, Purdy stood out as having significant issues, including not just stormwater, but also potential runoff and pollution issues associated with current uses there. Again, you know, we don't necessarily want to cost out at this level what all of these are, but we do want to recognize that it is something that's significant that would need to be addressed as part of any kind of planning for annexation. With parks and recreation, again, this is also a case where the city is currently going through the process of developing out a pros plan, parks, recreation and open space plan. And Carl, what's the status of that right now?
So they've done a lot of, a lot of the work has been done, apparently. And I haven't been a part of that process. They've been going through Parks Commission. So they're going to be, they're going to need a comp plan amendment in order to adopt the pros plan, but they're getting something, they're getting enough together now that they can satisfy the state agencies that they need to have this developed for. And then they're, we're going to put it on the docket for an amendment, I believe, next year. So that will be coming to the planning commission. So I guess in answer to your question, it's in draft still, right? I mean, they're still working through a final draft that would then be presented. I think they have to have it done or presented up to the state by April of next year, I want to say.
Okay. So, but recognizing that that's still in process, we were keen to use what's currently in place right now in terms of levels of service that would be required. We're not necessarily looking at, you know, individual planning of each UGA to determine the location of neighborhood parks, but we do want to acknowledge that, you know, given the current current development and population in these areas and then the, you know, likely development and buildout, you know, it is going to require an additional, you know, 82, it's 82 to 102 acres to meet the level of service standards that are identified in that, in that plan. Now, there are, you know, that plan also identifies that there's a need to, you know, improve park access within a certain radius of like individual homes. But this is more to identify the general magnitude of what kind of parks acquisition would be required to meet those level of service standards. And, you know, in, a lot of it is with open space and with you know, other types of less improved areas, but with neighborhood parks, you know, looking at up to 36 acres. And that's, that's important to note, just in terms of the magnitude of support that would be required for that. The comprehensive plan, I know, discussed purchasing a site for Park in the Canterwood UGA. That's certainly something to identify as well. I mean, looking at Reed Road and other areas is, you know, would certainly also be important. So and then finally, you know, there are other needs that we wanted to identify, but we didn't necessarily have a lot of information to go into depth about them. Looking at management of our parent areas and shoreline protection, in particular, the Purdy UGA is covered by the the shoreline master plan. And as a result, I mean, that, that may be acknowledged as one factor in looking at annexation. Fish passage barriers on local creeks, also something that's important, also something that's getting a lot of coverage in the state, especially with, especially with a lot of court cases related to fish passage. And I know that, I know that there are fish bearing creeks, you know, in the around the UGAs. Something that was mentioned last time, and I think is important to know, is also looking at tree canopy protections. I know that looking at development quality in general is important, but, you know, that was identified as something in particular. We noted that the comparisons between the requirements. And I think that there are certain areas that are already built out, but there are other areas where, you know, those kinds of protections could make a difference. So so based on this information, our previous discussion, some of the sources that we had referenced before, other literature review that we have done, what we wanted to do was to, you know, think about these UGAs and what they could contribute to the city, why the city would be interested in annexation, and then come up with guidelines. So what are the high level considerations that should be evaluated with each proposal? Whether it's looking at the city's strategy for annexation or you know, petitions that come in. And this is really intended to be used by council for more of a systematic review to provide consistent responses. Now, one recommendation that we received by email is to almost provide a sample checklist. I think that's a great idea. That's something that we certainly want to do, just so that we can give an idea about how these, how these elements would, would be applied in different ways. I'm just going to go through these quickly, give a short explanation, and we can go into a little bit more discussion kind of after we go through, after we go through the rest of this, but the primary one is just whether the annexation proposal is consistent with comp plan and other existing policy. We want to make sure that, you know, that, you know, council is following the law and by law, they need to ensure that any annexation proposal is consistent with the comp plan. In addition, there is also an understanding that we want to ensure that the folks that are being annexed, landowners and residents generally support the proposal. This is, you know, in part, this is good, this is just good practice in terms of, you know, ensuring that people are you know, consent to being incorporated within the city. But the other part that's important to note is that getting that general consent can be important to ensure that there isn't a lot of But the other part that's important to note is that getting that general consent can be important to ensure that there isn't a lot of. There aren't objections that are filed with the Boundary Review Board, for example. The third part, and this is related to, you know, the fiscal analysis that we had just referenced is, you know, does this. Proposed annexation represent a net positive fiscal impact to the city? So in going forward. Is this a net drain on city resources or will this supply? You know, the city with more revenue. It shouldn't be the only consideration, but it is something that. You know, can be important, especially when there are significant costs that, that would be incurred. For, would this proposal result in a significant increase in land development and population? So one of the things we had examined is just the history of annexation into Gig Harbor in addition to. You know, just the comparison between the UGAs and the current city and. We need time for the city to staff up. We need time to ensure that there's sufficient capacity. You know, to address the needs of new residents and potentially, you know. Well, to a lesser extent, new businesses, but primarily new residents, so. Large annexations. Probably something that can be phased as opposed to, you know, bringing something in all at once. So. We, we want to make sure that annexations aren't too big. But number five, we also want to make sure that they're not too small, that. Annexing a few parcels into the city is something that we would want to avoid because there is overhead that's associated with. Each annexation application to city staff. So I know that Carl has better things to do than to process fifteen separate annexation applications in one year, for example. With number six. Does this proposal maintain or create logical boundaries for the city? So as you can notice from the map and we'll go to the map, back to the map in a second, but. You know, there are certain areas where, you know, you're driving along a road and you go from the city to the county and back to the city again. And there can be a lot of confusion in terms of. What areas are the city, what areas are the county? Jurisdiction over roads. Service delivery, so. You know, there is an interest in ensuring that, you know, you don't have a lot of. You know. Peninsula is going into the city, you don't have a lot of pockets of the county. You know, surrounded by the city, that the boundaries are relatively regular. And as well that they also follow. You know, just logical boundaries between neighborhoods that they're, you know, that everything is reasonably connected together. So. With number seven and number eight, this is just looking at. What these areas may turn into in the future, so. You know, is this area that's being annexed currently or likely to be developed to urban densities and then. You know, could city planning increase the density or improve the quality of future development? Just kind of identifying that, you know, the areas to be annexed should be at urban densities that. There are certain areas that. Are not likely to be developed as urban. In the short term or even in the long term and that the holding on to a lot of vacant lots that aren't going to be developed in the future. Is not necessarily a good, a good approach for annexation. Number nine. Looking at city policy and planning, but looking at it for environmental protection and management, so. You know, is there an interest in? Annexing an area to apply, for example, tree canopy requirements or. You know, looking at shoreline protection or looking at riparian area protection. And again, this is not the only reason why areas should be annexed, but it can be an important consideration in whether or not to go forward. Finally, this is a catchall because we just want to make sure that we don't miss anything. Are there any other public benefits that would be associated with annexation? So as well, you know, examining things like. You know. Would certain areas provide opportunities for? Acquiring parkland, for instance. It's those types of issues that we want to identify with that, so that. When annexation comes forward, that. You know, that, that certain of other public benefits can be recognized. So finally. So kind of the last thing in, in this, we, we kind of went out on a limb here and. We wanted to provide you something a little provocative to get you, to get you thinking about. You know. Could we apply these strategies even further? So instead of just looking at. Individual applications one at a time. Is there a way that we can think about some of these areas such that we can? We can classify some of the UGAs or parts of the UGAs in terms of how the city could, should approach it in the future. So. I'll get into what each of these mean in a minute, but. There are five different areas that are color coded or patched on here. And this kind of proceeds in terms of, you know, generally the amount of effort that would be required. By the city for. Looking at annexation, so you know, the responsibility of the city, looking at annexing certain areas in the future. The first area is, it's the hatched area. Around the women's prison. And it, it's pretty much areas to be removed. These are areas where. There's no long-term potential for additional development, no requirements for servicing and. In particular, we're looking at McCormick Park here. It's, it's a site, there are two parcels there that are owned by Penn Met. They're not likely to be developed as a subdivision anytime soon. There are very little requirements on site for sewer servicing, so. There's no real need. Except for having regular boundaries to have that within the city. And given that there's just no potential for urban growth, it may just be reasonable to take it out completely. So. The, the second category is looking at urban servicing management areas. So. A lot of these are dominated by institutional uses with Moderna Links, you have the golf course. With Bucet, you have the women's prison and with Purdy, you have the elementary school, high school. And there are other uses in these areas, but a lot of them are not well connected with the rest of the city. Or there's minimal capacity for future development. Now. With Purdy in particular. There are also significant investment needs that would be required. To encourage further development, especially urban densities. So, under the comprehensive plan and the municipal code. You know, the, the urban growth areas also identify areas for sewer servicing. So we do want to recognize prison and the, you know, the schools, for example, do need to be serviced by sewer into the future. However. You know. What we don't want to do is to. Say as part of a strategy that they should just be incorporated within the city in the shorter medium term. So. Kind of the second, the second, the third category is local led. Potential annexation areas, and these are the areas in, in orange, so. Rosedale, Scancy, Thirty Eighth Street and Point Fosdick. Now, these are relatively smaller areas. And most of them can be annexed without significant costs. So. What we're thinking is that. These are areas where. It would be good to annex them, but it's not that. There is an extensive amount of planning that would be necessary for these areas. With the exception of, of the notch. With Point Fosdick, most of these areas are currently in single-family residential with R1. They're likely to stay in R1 with a few, you know, community uses in there. We, we want to identify that they should be annexed. It would be great to put out information to the residents. Talking about the potential benefits of annexation. But. This should really be more of a process led by residents and landowners under the petition process. If it doesn't happen right away, it's not necessarily as big of a problem. It won't require a lot of planning, so if it, if it proceeds along a natural course, that's, that's okay, and we can evaluate. Individual annexation application, individual annexation petitions according to the guidelines. Really, the next step is where. This is where. A bit more strategy is, is called for, because when we're looking at Canterwood, Peacock Hill and Reed Road. These are areas that are pretty substantive and bringing them into the city would entail. A significant increase in area and population, and these are established neighborhoods. Under current planning, they would come in as R1, but they may need some additional planning. Just to recognize the need for additional uses, parkland, for example. So, last year, the legislature passed. A new form of annexation through inter-local agreement and. Through that, the, the requirements aren't. You know, it's not necessarily requiring the consent of landowners and residents per se. It's more of looking at this as a planning process, engaging with Pierce County. Talking about mutual, you know, concerns about annexation in these areas. And engaging with the public and having more of a planning process to bring these areas in. So finally, what we also want to identify, and, and this is, these are the areas in blue on the map with Burnham Drive and. Some of the areas with Peacock Hill and, and that little. You know, notch with Scancy could also qualify for that. But there are some very small areas that represent irregular boundaries of the city. And there aren't a lot of landowners or residents in these areas, so, and, and given the configuration. There are approaches with annexation. Where the process can be streamlined, so. If the city can look to engage with the residents through a streamlined process. This can be resolved much faster with much less effort than through a petition process. So what we would want to recommend here is that the city explore just. Taking the lead and engaging with these residents to try to. To try to, try to move these annexations forward as opposed to waiting for like, pretty much one resident to put forward a petition. So. So. That's kind of the summary of, you know, moving from. The evaluation of these areas to coming up with the guidelines to kind of using those guidelines to inform a broader strategy. So I'm going to put up. Oh, oh, so actually, one more thing that I should note before I, before I move on to the discussion questions. What we want to identify here is that there is the potential that. There is the potential that. Some of the conditions in these areas could change. One of the areas in particular that we were looking at is Drana Links. We've identified it as kind of being. You know, more of a long-term service area. Simply because there's a large golf course that's there, there's a smaller, you know. Cluster of residential development on the southeast corner. And that it's not as well integrated with the rest of the city, but if, for example. Penn Met decides to, you know, wind down the, the golf course for some reason. Surplus the land or converted to other uses or, or if there's something that would benefit from the city being involved, being involved. And managing that process. Then it may make sense for. You know, the city to annex that area. Same thing with Purdy, if the county comes through and solves all of the infrastructure problems in that area. You know, annexing that area, I mean, it, it could be a potential option, but. We just want to identify that these categories are not. Set in stone, that they can evolve over time. You know, what we're putting forward ideally should be included as part of the cop plan update or at least considered. Just so that, you know, the, the strategizing for. Future annexation can be kind of part of, you know, the long-term planning for the community. And then one other thing that we just note here, it's noted in the comp plan, it was brought up several times, it's just that. You know, private water providers are present in both UGAs and parts of the city and. A long-term planning for integration of those within the municipal system. Is something that should be considered. It's, again, it's a little bit outside of our scope because it's, it's a much more, it's much deeper. Project. Then, then looking at the viability of annexing certain areas, but. So I'm going to move to. The discussion questions. And I will. So. We can move through, we, we can move back through it step by step. But the, the three discussion questions that I wanted to reference here. You know, the first is, you know, what questions do you have just from the reported materials, what stands out in particular? You know, what other topics or considerations should be included? Have we missed anything in, in this discussion? And then are these really the right recommendations to be making to council? I'm going to turn it back to Dawn. I'm sorry, I still hear thunder with the discussion questions, but I. Yeah.
Andrew, okay. I forgive you, but. So just to, just at the top of the discussion, kind of pinning it back to how Carl kicked us off. We're here to kind of get your advice and guidance on how, on what additions or improvements or clarifications we can make. Before this goes to council, so.
One more, one more thing to note is that. This is a draft. There are a few mistakes that we've picked up. Someone referenced, for example, that not all of the, not all of the streets are included on the map. We'll look into changing those. So this is not, this is not the version that would go to council. This is more of a working draft that we wanted to share with you. So.
So does have any, does anyone just start? Does anyone have any clarifying questions?
Can we switch back to the gallery view so we can see everybody? Because I think.
Sure.
Yeah.
We, you know, I think everybody's probably primed with their list of points. Though I think we can do without that slide.
Okay.
If we need to reference it back, we can certainly do that, but I think information is pretty straightforward.
So I do see one hand up by Commissioner Crossick.
Yes. Okay, I've got actually, I, I'm sorry, but I got a whole bunch of notes here. Both through your presentation and from the information. So with regard to the Bucet. Taking it out of the urban growth area, does having the McCormick Woods Park in the city. Gain us anything in the way of having additional park resources that count against our goals? With regard to levels of service?
So in the pros plan, it does acknowledge that McCormick Park is part of the regional. Park system. So in terms of looking at that. I, I, I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's necessarily included in the. You know, in the tally of city-owned parks, but it is acknowledged kind of more broadly. I don't think that it will help because it's not a neighborhood park. It's not kind of a, it, it is kind of. You know, it may be considered kind of open space or. And I'm blanking on the other classification for wildland park or off the top of my head, but. I mean, it could be considered, but in some ways, that's also an accounting thing rather than a. Rather than actually extending out services for the parks, because it would, it wouldn't be. I, I don't know whether Penn Met would give it up or transfer it over to the city if it were annexed. So.
Okay. Peacock Hill and Reed Road. Seems to me there are some significant environmental issues in both of those areas with regard to the tree canopy. with regard to the tree canopy, which we're losing in both areas. And also in regard to the proliferation of septic tanks that service those two areas. So I'm wondering if those might be a little bit higher priority because of the environmental issues.
So that's one of the reasons why we had flagged those areas as part of that, that, you know, planned potential annexation areas. They're, they're large areas that could be phased in over time, but it's probably better as part of the planning process and, and as well kind of acknowledging that there could, I mean, that, that understanding that phasing of additional sewer infrastructure, for example, and potentially drainage infrastructure in certain areas, maybe important planning for those areas as well. So instead of just, you know, negotiating it piece by piece, having a consistent planning process for the Reed Road area, acknowledging that sewer infrastructure would need to be extended for it to be annexed.
Okay. With regard to Purdy, I, I look at Purdy and I think this is a separate community. Is it really appropriate to have it as part of Gig Harbor? Or should they look at incorporating their own city or village or whatever we call it over there?
Well, so that, so the part of the reason for the extension of sewer infrastructure is pretty much the schools. It's, you know, they're, they're in other communities, looking at areas with, you know, commercial development may be a benefit. But, you know, there's so little that's there and there's so little that like, would likely be developed. I think the challenge is that it's because the UGAs are also the sewer service areas and that the city, it, it, there are certain requirements for extending out sewer servicing beyond the UGAs. That kind of keeping it within the UGAs, but just acknowledging that it's very long-term, that it's not likely to be annexed within the next 15 or 20 years is probably a better solution than incorporation, because I don't, I don't really know what it would incorporate with, but you know, odds are that it would still be on the sewer service, the sewer system for Gig Harbor.
Yeah, because my concern there is I think extending sewer service to Purdy, assuming we're going to use our existing treatment plant, would be massively expensive because of the pumping that would be required.
Well, yeah, and it's, it's more to acknowledge that there are institutional uses there that are already on sewer. So more than anything else. So it, it's not, it's kind of, I'll, I'll be honest with you. It's one of those areas where if the UGAs were being drawn today, you probably would just have some kind of exception for the, or some kind of acknowledgement just to those institutional uses and you wouldn't, you would just kind of leave everything else alone.
Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to thank you and tell you that I was really very pleased with the report as you written it. And I did feel that you were very responsive to the comments that we made at the last meeting. So good job.
Oh, great. Thanks. Carl, did you, did you want to chime in on something? I noticed that you were unmuted for a second. Whoops.
I got mixed up. Oh, I'm unmuted. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I was just going to chime in and say that, yeah, relative to sewer and Purdy, you know, we were looking at this a while back and I know it is a little convoluted up there, I think. And, and to Commissioner Crossick's, Crossick's, I'm sorry, mispronounced your name. To your point about how far that would need to be pumped, there are lines, you have sewer lines that are running up nearly as far as Purdy and maybe into Purdy just a little bit. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's true. So that, you know, we are already doing a little bit of that. And there are some, as I understand, there are some private service lines that exist up in Purdy as well. And I, quite honestly, I don't exactly know how that works. And I was talking with Public Works about it. I'm not sure that they are understanding exactly how that works either, but they do exist on the maps. And so, you know, it's not, it's not outside the realm of possibilities that, you know, Purdy, if Purdy were annexed, that, you know, that we wouldn't, that we would, wouldn't be able to service that area with sewer. But, but certainly, you know, and even just looking at this report, you know, and what's come out of this report, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's feasible in that regard. So I just, I just wanted to chime in on that, something that I learned recently about that area.
Okay, thanks, Carl. That's useful information.
All right, I'll see a hand from Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. It wasn't completely clear to me, reading the report, whether there were any costs included in the, in the expense projections for capital things like pump and lift stations for Reed Road, like wastewater treatment for Purdy. I guess I concluded that those kinds of costs are not, are not reflected in the report. Am I right?
Yeah, and part of it was that we were looking to rely on existing information and studies that were out there. And we were not finding a lot of information that would provide good costs. We, we can, we can make a mention of what the order of magnitude might be, but it would be a really broad estimate if we would be putting anything like that in there. And it would be, it would be something that would, it, there could be a lot of approaches to deal with it as well. So. But do, do, should we put more detail on that in the, in the report?
Well, my suggestion would be just clarify it so that the council will, so it will be clear to the council what's in and what's out. That would be my suggestion. The other question I have is, how would you go about annexing a area like Canterwood incrementally? I mean, I, I just, that suggestion comes up time and time again in the report, but I don't really know how you do it.
Well, there are, there are a few, hold on, I'm trying to think of. Well, I can actually, let me share my screen because I have a map available. I mean, the, the, the challenge is, just one second, and I'll drop in a map here. I mean, the challenge is that you're right. I mean, the, the planned community takes up almost all of the area of Canterwood. So it, it's a challenge with respect to figuring out stepwise, how you would, how you would annex it. However, for one, you know, part of the Canterwood Homeowners Association and part of Canterwood Act proper actually extends into Peacock Hill. So, so I think first of all, one thing that we don't, one thing that we want to identify is that this wouldn't just be Canterwood. It would probably be Canterwood and Peacock Hill that we would identify for phasing. With, with annexing Canterwood all at once, like it's, it may just be something that, that, that planned community would need to come in all at once. That would probably need, again, additional coordination and planning, identification of additional capacity that would be needed before they come in, which is why we had identified it as more of a planned annexation as opposed to a, you know, locally-led one. So it's, it's, there's no good answer because it's, it takes up most of that area.
That's, that's all for right now. Thank you.
Can I, I have a, a related question about Canterwood. I have 13 questions to a better report, but.
Oh, great. Then it'll be perfect by the end. That's great.
But there's no sense hopscotching since Tom has, you know, brought up a great question about Canterwood. So, so I have a, a series of questions about that. What, one is dovetailing on to Tom's concern and being a member of Canterwood but not living there. I would, I would anticipate creating tremendous community friction if you did a phased annexation of Canterwood. I, I don't see that going well.
Oh, no. And we might need to be a little bit more clear that we're not planning on dividing the community up in half and doing one in year one and one in year five or something like that. So that's a good point.
Okay, then what, what do you mean?
So there are like, so as I had said, I, I think first of all, it's more of Canterwood slash Peacock Hill because it's a substantive amount of land. And, you know, there are a few areas that aren't, you know, specifically zoned as part of the, as part of the master plan community to the northwest of Canterwood. And some to the southwest, I believe. But I, I mean, with, with respect to phasing though, if it comes in, it probably, like the entire master plan community probably needs to come in all at once. And that is a, that is a bit of a conundrum because it's a lot of people to come in all at once. And it, it'll change the makeup of the city. It will be a net positive looking at the assessment value. I mean, there are a lot of, you know, it, there's a lot of property value there, a lot of property taxes that come into the city. But yeah, it, it's, that is a, that is a, that's a, a challenging question that it's, that is very difficult for us to answer because it's, it's, it, it's more part of the public process and part of the intangibles that are hard for us to evaluate from data.
And I, I would say, you know, it's an interesting point that, that we're, this is a really interesting discussion because, you know, immediately when I read the report, I was thinking about this too. And I thought, well, we would, you know, look at, you know, Canterwood was developed in phases. And I thought, well, maybe you would, that, that would be sort of an approach or a strategy, you know, to sort of look at it and, look at it in, in lock phases in some manner. But I, to to Chair's point and to Commissioner Brown's point, you know, question as well, that, yeah, that, that creates, that could create a lot of political issues there, you know, for that homeowners association in trying to, to split that up and create some infighting. And, you know, maybe, you know, maybe wouldn't even make sense to do. So, you know, I think, I think the report, you know, what the report is stating as far as, you know, bringing things in, in phases through interlocal agreement accompanied, it also says accompanied by more detailed planning and public engagement, you know? And I think that's sort of the, that's the parachute there in this, in this regard. I think, you know, that, yeah, it's a, it's a great question and we'd have to put, we definitely have to put some, some thinking caps on as to how that would work out. But, you know, would also go, there would be a lot of that work would be put in through the interlocal agreement as well, right? So, you know, maybe, maybe there is, maybe there is some divisions within Canterwood that we're not even really aware of yet until we've done some of the public engagement or done some of the outreach to find out, you know, what, what those are, if, if they do exist.
Carl, if you, on the map there, if you look to the west of 54th Avenue there, that is a fairly decent chunk of land that is not part of the Canterwood community. That's a series of subdivisions there that are located immediately north of where I live. That could come in, in either a single chunk or a phased approach.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think something else to keep in mind too is that we still want to maintain regular boundaries as much as possible and, and identify that, you know, phasing will proceed along a logical way. I think, I think though, you know, identifying that as a phase is certainly going to be important. And, and could be integrated separately. So, yeah.
Okay, I do see a hand from Commissioner Green.
I'm going to stop the sharing for this, but I can bring this up if necessary.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Hi, I just unmuted myself. So I just had one question. In reading the document before, it talked about that Point Fostic didn't have a land use category. And, and why is that?
I, that is something that I'm going to have to, you know, kick to Carl. On the future land use map, it doesn't have anything designated for it. One thing that I should note is that if it were annexed, it would come in as R1 due to, you know, under the municipal code, but Carl, if you want to.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So it's a, it's a very good question. And, you know, we've, we've designated all of our UGAs with future land use. I mean, they, you know, they're all covered by Pierce County zoning and land use. These are just, you know, sort of projected land use that we put into the comp plan to say that, you know, if and when we annex, this is what the comp, the comp plan contemplates them coming in as. There's still a process, even after the annex that they would come, you know, that would come through. I'd have to look, look at that to be sure, but I believe the process would come through Planning Commission in order to designate the actual zoning for those, for those parcels. But to your point about this particular parcel, I, why it never, why it never received any land use designation under the comp plan, I'm not entirely certain why, why that was done. But it's possible too that we, you know, all of our UGA could look like that, right? And we would just rely on, like Andrew said, that everything would just come in under R1. Assuming it would come in assumed as R1, I should say. And then it would come to the Planning Commission for, you know, for consideration to maybe change the land use designation and potentially the zoning then. So this, that parcel is a little bit mysterious. We have another, we have a parcel out in the bay as well off of Anthony's that just kind of floats out there. If you look at the zoning map, that doesn't have any zoning designation either. So we've got a couple of these things. And I think, yeah, also, it's also on the land use, the Austin Estuary, as well as that parcel, but neither out there in the bay, neither have any sort of land use or zoning designations. And this parcel falls under that as well. So man, that was a really long-winded way of saying, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
The second question I had was on page 16, it talked about the timing of annexation. And it said, annexation are only to be considered when a private party petitions. And I didn't really understand that because, you know, previously you talked about different, different ways annexation would happen. And so I just wondered why there it said private party petitions.
So I, so the intent of that was to just say residents and/or landowners because it's the, the different processes for petitioning for annexation can involve different people. So we're just trying to use a catch-all category for it. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
What page was that on, Commissioner Granit?
Page 16.
16.
Thank you.
And your timing of annexation.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the analysis?
Sure.
Oh, bring it on.
Sure.
So, so back to Canterwood, and I'm not, I'm not going to beat that horse, but the, I would just like to say that in the Bellingham case, they, they annexed, like, I think it was in 1996, 1997. They annexed what sounded like a single area that had, if I can remember correctly, it's over a thousand and it might have been along the lines of 1,200 to 1,600 people. So just boom, in one year, you know, they boosted their population and it didn't sound from the report like they did it in any sort of phased way. And so on the one hand, I can appreciate why a large annexation like that might present certain challenges. But on the other hand, if you have the opportunity to plan these things methodically over the course of years, I, I don't see why that would be a problem to execute that in, in one fell swoop.
Oh, no. And I, I agree. I mean, I, I think, I think that it's more important to leave the option open for phasing more than anything else. Because, and this is one particular area where the new interlocal agreement approach to annexation can be a benefit because you can identify in advance, you know, we're you know, we're annexing this area, this half year one, this half in year five or year three or whatever. And once that's down, the city needs to pass the annexation ordinances, but it's not like a petition that we need to go out and would need to be approved in each area where the, where phase two might be turned down for some reason. There's certainty that would be involved with it, but if it doesn't come up, if it looks like certain areas can just come in all at once, then and if that makes sense, that's, that's great. So.
Okay, thanks. And then the, uh, in reference to the the Bellingham case, and and that was in the last packet of information, just as a reminder, the other commissioners, the um, the, I can't remember, it was the city council's package or the package that went to city council, but um, the, the final document that they came up with, you know, they had listed whatever it was fifteen or sixteen different, you know, G U G A's. Um, and they had gone through them one by one and said, you know, basically area one, and then they had six to eight points, you know, fiscal impact, you know, and and it just went down the line. And they addressed the intangibles that we have talked about and and Commissioner Krasik brought up last time and Commissioner Soltis referenced in his written comments. Um, and 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 usually at the, the last thing uh, at the bottom, interestingly, of everyone uh, was whether or not the people were even interested in it. And the, you know, so that, that was, they sort of like, they, they listed a group and they put them in in different blocks like you have done. Uh, but they, they had the group of the non-starters basically because people ain't interested. We ain't going there. And so, but but I, I, I don't know where they got that information. Was that the vocal minority yelling? Or was there actually, were there actually surveys done that actually provides some sort of reasonable scientific data that says whether or not people agree with this, or is it ten percent of the people preventing a a reasonable action of of, you know, the city of Gig Harbor?
Well, so um, yeah, I, I really don't know how they, how they would get that information either unless they survey people. And if you survey people, geez, you might as well go through the process instead or or see if people are inter, like, do it right before you're interested in in moving the process forward as opposed to just putting it into a strategy and saying, oh, great, eighty percent of you want it. Well, enjoy that, enjoy being annexed in year ten or year fifteen or whatever. So with um, so with respect to the other comment and um, uh, I I did see the written comment um, uh, earlier today. I think that that makes sense. And one thing that we wanted to do was essentially do the other side of that crosswalk. So right here, we have everything organized according to topic area. We just switched that around in the appendix and have kind of the, the maps that we were showing that I, what, like, the maps that we were showing before, the aerials highlight, you know, economic impact, the, well, fiscal impact, I should say. You know, infrastructure considerations, uh, you know, thing, and it recommended strategies and have that on an area by area basis for for reference in the appendix, so.
Yeah, so and and I would like to say that, that I, I, I like the way that you presented the information in your report, especially in the tables. But he, as you said at the beginning, um, sometimes tables are effective and sometimes they aren't. And so I actually found both of those tools very effective, that like the table approach that you use as well as that summary, uh, verbal um, that approach that the, the city of Bellingham had used in in their report. I also saw Don waving her hand furiously.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I was, I was just, um, it's not the Bellingham example, but the Gorsht work on annexation uh, in terms of getting community input, our experience is, uh, it has to be kind of part of a broader uh, public education campaign. It might be something that would be like a small component of a comprehensive plan update, something that is very public facing. But our experience is like, it starts with even just educating people. People don't know they live in a U G A. They know they don't live in the city, but they don't know, they don't know they live in a potential annexation area or U G A. So you're starting very fundamentally with that education and outreach. And then you can kind of like explain like how we think about the fiscal impacts. So these other like impacts, and then from there kind of get the litmus test about how warm they might be to the idea. And then you kind of stop there, um, because you don't, you're not intending to provoke a bunch of like annexation petitions like all at that moment. But that would be, I think the timing of that is like in a bigger, kind of more open community visioning, public facing, kind of long-range planning conversation.
And one other thing to to add on to that as well, I mean, typically, when you're reaching out to people, the main thing that they want to know is, is my property bill, property tax bill going to go up? And you know, when you compare the city and the county levy rates, they don't like it, it, it's pretty comparable. However, the big advantage to being part of the city is that you uh, you know, your, you know that your tax money is going towards, you know, things that are local as opposed to, you know, the county as a whole. So, you know, drawing, in a lot of cases, and and there's nothing, I mean, comparing the, the city and the county code, I mean, obviously, there are some people that may want to stay in the county for, you know, uh, certain, certain very idiosyncratic reasons, but.
So they cut down their trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, and and hopefully to close the book on Bellingham, at least in my mind, is that, and I brought this point up before and and it's, it's a point that that I always want to see, and that is, you know, data, 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 and that, that is, what, what were the predicted financial impacts in Bellingham's annexation plan? And what were the real financial impacts a- after the fact and once it was done and and how closely did um, the, the guesses come? Were there any, a- a- and I guess most importantly, were there any big negative surprise? It's like, oh, my goodness. We, we, we predicted this, Alice, like you showed, like, your charts show that, hey, we should just wrap our rounds, arms around all of this and the city's going to be better off financially. And and I'm being glib, of course, uh, but, but uh, Bellingham did some pretty aggressive annexation uh, since two thousand. And so I'm wondering what were the predicted impacts fiscally and what actually happened?
Yeah, um, as part of that, we were looking to track down the, the person that we were working with, with uh, with uh, Bremerton for the Gorsht annexation that we have provided in that packet. And I, I believe that they've moved on to another community. So that was a little bit difficult to kind of track the, that line, but I think that that's a good point. I, I, I don't necessarily know if we want to put it in the, in the um, like, in this report, but I think that it would be good for you to know because if you're going to be supporting it in the future, like I, it, it would be a challenge for us to kind of, we're not going to have quantitative info, it, it's going to be a hard thing to put in hard quantitative information about some of the costs involved with annexation because it's all folded into municipal budgets and it's, we were looking to more talk with folks that have gone through the process and had a report in hand to see if there have been any differences, but would it make sense for us to, like, we're, would it make sense for us to just talk to Bellingham and ask how they're, how it went? Uh, we were going to talk with someone from our uh, previous client list, but if that seems like it would be a more relevant example, you know, for you to take a look at that, that might be better. Would that, would that make sense?
Yeah, it would for me. And and, you know, it gives, puts some real numbers to it and and makes it easier for me to support a theory, you know, it's the, you know, the airport's gonna be, you know, a hundred billion dollars. No, just kidding, a hundred hundred and seventy, no, two hundred billion, y- y- you know, so um, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand and avoid here. So, um, okay. So great. Um, and and I, the, I'm focusing on Bellingham because they, they look like they had a pretty good process. They have a pretty good future plan and they've had several years to make an analysis. So it wasn't something that just happened.
Yeah.
So, um, okay. And and this is in somewhat of no particular order, but these are the questions that came up in my mind as I read through your, your fifty-two or three-page document. Um, so um, there has been a reference to talking with the chief of police and and which is good, of course. Um, and and uh, I presume that the fire and uh, E and fire one, whatever, whatever they call themselves, fire and and E M T services. But um, I think it would be really important to know not just how many more uh, patrol officers that Chief U C thinks he's going to need to, to control the hooligans in Canterwood. Um, but to um, to know from, from the police in both the city of Gig Harbor and the county sheriff and from the fire department in, in this area, although I understand that cross, there isn't like a city fire department, that's all run by the county. But to understand from them, what are the, what are the today problems that they have because of these, uh, especially these bizarre um, uh, non-contiguous city limits. And because that would be, um, in my mind, a major driver to, to put that annexation error, that U G A at the top of the list. Because if there are issues related to safety currently because of these nonsensical lines, then, then to me, that would carry a lot of weight. And so that, that would be a s- a second, that's, it's, that's not just numbers of officers, not just numbers of M Ts.
Yeah, so um, with respect to uh, fire and E M T, um, so given that nothing is changing in terms of the jurisdiction of fire and rescue one, I think it is.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, that, that any kind of annexation doesn't have an impact on their service area or how they provide services or anything like that. So we, we, we did not include them as part of this analysis because it's just, it's essentially it's the same, um, there, there's still protecting the same area.
Okay.
Uh, there are, there are other cases where that really is a big deal, especially when it comes to locations of fire stations, for example, but in this case, it's, it's just one district. Uh, same thing with the school district as well. I mean, there's no change in school district with with annexation. Um, I, I think that that's, uh, I think that that's in, uh, like a good thing to add more detail to. I know when we were talking with the chief, um, one thing that he did mention is that uh, they car, like the Gig Harbor Police Department and Pierce County Sheriff have a good working relationship for mutual aid calls, for example, that you know, if a, if a uh, service call is within an area that's inconvenient for them to access at any one given time, you know, you, you may have a, you know, Gig Harbor Police Department cruiser respond and or officer respond instead. Um, but I, I think, I think that it's a, I think that it's a good thing to add more detail to. I, I don't know if it's possible to quantify certain elements of that, like responding to calls at Burnham Drive, like, I, I don't know if there's going to be a lot that we can reference or, or give an idea about the price for, but uh, we can add more detail to that, though, to, to make it, to, to kind of reinforce that. Kind of what we've been saying and what you, you were talking about.
Chair, could I clarify, could I ask clarifying question, Chair, of your, of your question? Are you, are you looking at that as something that might be um, uh, a criterion? Something to add to the criteria um, that they've proposed in the report?
Um, I think it's already in there.
Well, we talk about, you know, that's where I was kind of going with. So when, you know, under number six, we talk about, does this proposal maintain and create logical boundaries for the city? Uh, and because I, and I think that's kind of what this was trying to get to. I think that's where your question was going because of the way the boundaries are drawn now between police and um, and the sheriffs, the Pierce County sheriffs, which the chief did touch, touch on a lot during our meeting with him, you know, and how they work together and really do work together a lot. I mean, they, they support each other, you know, just depending on what the nature of the emergency or the nature of the call is, you know, they, they go into each other's jurisdictions all the time. Now that, you know, that's not their primary jurisdiction, of course. Um, but um, I think we, I think we kind of touched on that with the chief and he kind of made it sound like it's not really, that's not really an issue necessarily because of the, because of the working relationship that the sheriff's department has with our police department. That might be, it might be different in other jurisdictions. They might not have that. There might be some animosity there. There might be some, um, I don't know, you know, they might be um, competing, you know, in some ways, I guess, but according to the chief, we don't have that, you know, we've got a really strong relationship with them. So I, I don't know that it's a, I don't think it's a point that should be dropped at all, uh, because I think it's a really good point. And maybe there's a way to um, wrap that safety element into that number six guideline so that we, we capture that idea in the report.
Or maybe just a clause that says with special emphasis on, on um, you know, police safety or whatever proper term would be. Um, and I, and I, again, I would, I would just encourage you to speak independently to the, the county sheriff's office, um, because you may get a different take, you may not. Because the, the um, y- y- you know, I read it on Facebook, so it must be true. People complain about response times of the county.
Yeah.
Compared to, you know, the, the city residents. And if you just think about it logically, that probably makes sense just because of the, the, the acreage that they have to cover, the square miles that they have to cover. So.
And that's, that's a good point to incorporate in there as well. I mean, we, we haven't acknowledged the fact that one of the big benefits is re- reduced police response times.
Yeah, okay, so um, the, and and this is a little bit for you, Carl, but how do we balance? A- and and for Andrew as well, um, you know, part of the U G A is meeting growth needs and growth targets, although that's not for us in, in Gig Harbor. Um, but it is a, it's a hot topic and you, you know, you say, what do you, well, you, you, you guys are on the ground. Well, we're on the ground in Gig Harbor. And, and high density and population growth is a hot topic. Um, and there was a whole bunch of people voted out of the council uh, on that issue alone. And so um, the, there are areas, part of the growth areas that have, still have developable land. Um, and, and a- a- as that, and part of the push of the U G A is to increase the density within the city of Gig Harbor so that you don't increase the density in the rural areas. But there's a real conflict there with what's going on to preserve the heart and soul of our lovely little turn-of-the-century fishing village.
Yeah. That's really, that's a, it's a loaded statement, Chair. It's a lot, there's a lot in there.
Well, but I think my point is, if we don't acknowledge that somewhere in this report, um, then, then we're, we're missing a major touchstone in this community.
So, when, when you talk about referencing it, though, what, what would be the best approach to reference it? I'll, I'll, I'll plainly ask for your help with that because I want to make sure that we get this right. If, if we're missing that touchstone, what's the best way of, of addressing it?
Um, well, I think at a minimum, you just acknowledge the conflict that there's, there's going to be competing pressures between the goals of the U G A and, and the goals of the current um, government, you know, within the city limits of Gig Harbor.
Yeah.
There's just a natural tension there that you want people to preserve the environment. And at the same time, uh, we are under pressure from the state to try to concentrate more people in cities because it's a whole lot more efficient to serve them there. So I think just an acknowledgement that that's an issue is probably sufficient.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a really good point. And, you know, really, when it comes down to it, this, this, the, the undertaking of this report is, is, is kind of meant to be a tool for the city to um, uh, to use to justify why we're not just going out and annexing all of our U G A's, you know? That's what the county would like us to do. You know, the county, the county wants, wants the U G A's annex. They want us to take them. And that's what Growth Management Act, Growth Management Act contemplates. Growth Management Act contemplates, right? That's, that's kind of like, you know, you nailed it on the head there. So that really is, you know, what this, ultimately what this. Report is meant to help us with when we go into this next, you know, periodic update of our comp plan. We'll have. This data and these guidelines that have been sort of, you know, that act as sort of a policy directive and are meant to inform. That update as support for why we're deciding to annex in such a manner. You know, and that, you know, either through a phased approach or a targeted approach in some cases. And and so I think, you know, I, I guess what I'm getting at is I think it's a really good point if we're, if that's missing in this report and. I have to go back and search through the report, I I thought, I thought that there is, there is some mention in here. About buildable lands and and I know that, you know, the capacities are in here. And we're going to have, you know, all of the growth, our growth targets ironed out here very shortly. Buildable lands report is out, you know, this all, the, all these things kind of end up hand in hand. But I think what you're getting at, Chair, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that there should be. This, just the acknowledgement of. Of the conflict, right? Some acknowledgement of this sort of push and pull. Between local control in some ways and and state.
Yeah, and and to further the point, it it would really. Make the Canterwood and the Madrona Sands, the. Golf course and the Peacock Hill area. Very favored targets for the city to be proactive in annexing because. They are low density and they're completely built out. And so you get to meet your population goal. And and without creating any more higher density. You know, housing, but the flip side of that coin, of course, is meanwhile, you have these areas that are UGAs and still have buildable lands. And you're going to have developers, you know, licking their chops and and going in there. And trying to develop before they become part of the city. So anyway, it's all very interesting tensions, to use John's appropriate word.
Oh, sorry.
But but the point is, I I think that that. My goal is to present. Work to the council that that is. Very thoughtful and shows the council that we've considered all of these things, acknowledging. What we know about them, what the goals of the city council are. And and tried to. Let them know that we have done the proverbial deep dive into all of these issues.
Yeah, and I I guess, I guess one more, one more thing to add to that. When we're, when we're thinking about. Growth targets typically on a county level, it's both the city and the UGA. That that's, that's typically the recipient of of the. Certain growth targets from buildable land, so it's, I mean, there's an acknowledgement that growth is going to go on in the UGAs and that it's not. It's not completely for accommodating growth, that there's already existing growth there. But but I I see your point, though, and I think, I think that we can, I think that there are ways of incorporating that better into the, into our discussion.
Okay.
I just see Commissioner Brown has his hands up, and so. Do you have additional questions that were on your original list?
Yes, I do, but I I was just pointing.
Okay, okay, all right.
Greg, why don't you go ahead and finish out your list?
So there's references in a few places about. Subsuming all of the private water suppliers. As we do this, and so. A couple of things, how how do, I'm sure someone must have to register if they have a private well and they're they're a private water supplier. And and it in case that there are people even within the city limits right now that apparently have private, you know, they have their own wells on their lands. So. That's going to be an interesting hard sell in in my estimation that that. Hey, come, you know, come, come to the city of Gig Harbor and give us your well and start paying us money for water when it used to be free.
That's, that's true. First of all, it's in the comp plan already, like there's a, there's a distinct call out. That. You know, for consolidation of water purveyors. The other consideration is that as part of annexation. Those kinds of franchises would lose their license and need to be re-registered by the city. I. That's something that. It's, that is an organizational planning. Exercise. That doesn't just involve annexation, because like you said, there are private water purveyors in the city. It's something, though, that I I think needs to at least be. Thought about in relation to this, but it's that. It's something that we wanted to include in the discussion, but not necessarily as a prerequisite for annexation.
Yeah, okay, good enough. So. And and while we're on water. That's the coming in and now the going out, that how are the new costs for sewer services calculated? And and I asked that with respect to the fact that that I lived in Southern California. And my water in Gig Harbor, Washington is more expensive than it was in Southern California. And part of the reason for that, from my understanding from the presentation that we had by. You know, when we're talking about the wastewater treatment plan way back when, Carl, before I think most of the other folks on that they're currently on the commission was. That that we're continuing to have to build out and service new areas, and so that that has to be financed, so. So. On a certain level, I kind of, I kind of get it, but on another level, it doesn't feel exactly right. That my water bill has to remain exorbitantly high, so that, so that. A new area can be annexed into the city. And and to wit, not to pick on Canterwood, but I just, I know because, you you know, I hang out there on the golf course, that, but, you know, I think. Tons of those people are unseptic, and obviously also you said it was the same for Peacock Hill area, the UGA, Peacock Hill. And and so adding all of those people to the sewer system would be a huge cost to the city. And and it doesn't seem like it could possibly be borne by just those users.
Yeah, so. This. So this is a particular situation where, again, I, you know. Some of the planning of the sewer infrastructure was, there isn't a lot of existing information about it. It's hard under a scope to fully flesh out exactly what what would be necessary. I've done it before. And it it's like really broad estimates. But what I would say, though, is that there are identified septic issues in certain areas that would require sewer servicing. And there are. There are requirements in the UGA that if you've got a, if you've got a sewer main. Within a certain distance, you have to connect to it as a, you know. As requirement. In terms of financing it through connection charges, I mean, it it's. That is an age-old question for for infrastructure investment in general. It's not something that can be completely borne by, you know. Simply just what you, what you pay for when you connect. However, it's. I don't know how to bring your water bill down, I'll be honest with you. And and I think, I think that there, there potentially could be additional charges if the city. You know, extends sewer infrastructure out to Reed Road, for example. But the. Let me. Let me get back to on that, because that may be something where we might need to do a little bit more thought as to whether. Any kind of additional information about infrastructure financing of sewers would be necessary for for the, for the report. Just to give more information about what's possible.
Well, that that dovetails into my next question, and this is a little bit for you, Carl, but also for for our consultants, and that is that. That what is the city of Gig Harbor currently doing to build infrastructure out to UGAs, mostly utilities? And I I asked that question with respect to the, again, the Bellingham experience. Where they found that they invested all of this money to to improve. The utilities infrastructure for the UGAs, I think. With the expectation is that they would then be annexed and increase the tax base and all the good things that go along with it. And now. A whole bunch of those areas are saying, no, thanks. Clear from the Bellingham's report that they thought that that was a mistake. And so I'm wondering, what is Gig Harbor doing and are we making the same mistake?
Well, I I can say that, you know, as far as our infrastructure plan goes, I mean, we, we generally. The cost, the cost of extending our infrastructure and sewer water, everything. We generally put that on developers, right? When they come in and they want to subdivide some property or, you know, or there's a commercial. Project that comes in, I mean, we, they they bear the cost of of extending that. Of extending those utilities. Of course, you know, we're, we're sort of focused on, I think the city is more, is really more focused on traffic at the moment, you know. And pedestrian ways than we are on sewer and water. As far as I know, I have to go and check our. Our CIP and see, you know, see exactly what's on that. I haven't looked at it in a little while, it's something that we will be looking at, though. But I don't think, you know, there's, there's not a lot of desire, if if any desire at all at the moment, to extend. Utilities into the UGAs, I can tell, I I definitely can tell you that, and I think that was one of the. Main, one was probably the largest impetus for reducing the UGA. In the East Bay area, because we were starting to, you know, we were getting some development proposals over there and they wanted us, they wanted the city to. To extend services and the city didn't really want to do that, and so. And it didn't really, doesn't, didn't really make sense. At least at the time, you know, the decision makers decided it didn't really make sense to have that in our UGA, the East Bay area. So, right, you know, right or wrong. So. I don't know if that answer, I don't know if that answers the question exactly, I think, you know, that's a, it's a really good question, and I I think, you know, if. Trent Ward, our city engineer, were here, he could answer it pretty quickly. And so we'll certainly, we can certainly get that answer, though, and bring you back the, the the real information.
Okay, yeah, great.
From those that have it.
So another, just to, just to jump in really quickly, another interesting bit of trivia is that in the municipal code, there is a provision. Where technically the city can. As a condition of servicing, the, the condition of sewer servicing. Require that an owner automatically support an annexation proposal. We didn't necessarily, I I think we made a mention of it in the report, we probably wouldn't recommend to, you know. Annex folks against their will, but that was just something interesting to note.
Thank you, and and you you almost provided the perfect segue into the next question, but. What is the, what is the legal authority when you reference the municipal code? But what is the legal authority behind our comprehensive plan? I was doing some research and trying to, you know, trying, because it occurred to me, our comprehensive plans. Legal documents, and sometimes they are and sometimes they ain't. And so I wonder, is our comprehensive plan. Codified, you know, in statutory law, which, which. So that is the case in Gig Harbor.
It's the case everywhere in Washington State, and it's primarily that the council can. Only take actions that comply with comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. What would happen? I thought it was done with Canterwood, but I lied. What would happen with the Canterwood Golf Course since? That is privately owned. And there's, you know, and and that is owned by a multinational corporation. And which includes the restaurant, the tennis, the fitness center, the the golf course. So if that gets annexed. What happens? And and there was some language in there that you talked about, you know, the interest in golf is is fading and we would have to buy. In Canterwood because of the requirements for the, you know, the parks and open space. And so I was wondering what exactly. You were intimating there.
I, hopefully, I wasn't implying that folks are going to sell off the the Canterwood Golf Course. Or anything like that. The main, the main thinking that we had was just more with Madrona Lakes than anything else. And primarily just because. There have been other communities in the region, I know of Bothell and Pacific in particular, where. Declining use of golf courses has led to them figuring out other uses for them and. The only reason why we wanted to acknowledge that and really just acknowledge it for Madrona Lakes is that. If the, if Penn Met decides to do something else with a site, it may be. It may change the city's interest in annexing that area. If they decide to sell it off for some reason, instead of, you know, changing its use to some other kind of recreation. You know, that may be a situation where the city may want to step in. I don't want to make any guesses about what their long-range planning might be for that site, but. We just wanted to include it as a contingency.
Yeah, so so then, does Club Corp, the big club corp that owns the golf course? How how are they involved in the annexation decision? I mean, it it, they, do they get a boat? I mean, they own whatever, the hundred and fifty acres. And and but none of the houses and they're not a resident and so on.
Well, this, it gets kind of messy because, and this may be. And I I, I want to be careful when I say this. Annexation by petition, it can be managed by. Can be moved forward by. Owners that represent sixty percent, at least sixty percent of the land value of an area. So as a result. An annexation by petition. May involve that company, they would need to, they they could theoretically. Be signatories to a petition. That may be, and and this is where, and again, this is where I might ask for your guidance here, where. Would it make sense for them to be? To have that role, to have almost a. Like a direct role in the decision or more consultation. Like more be a stakeholder to be consulted with as part of a broader planning process. What what would make sense for their role for that?
You talking about Canterwood in general, Andrew?
No, for the company that would own the golf course and the.
What what, what would the companies?
Yeah.
Well, I I, the only thing I can tell you, and I'm not trying to play gotcha here, I'm just trying to.
Oh, no, no.
Help you guys understand the 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 beast, the, and 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 I have some, I I I actually am on the Board of Governors that they, at Canterwood. So I have, I, to the inner workings, you know, of of what what goes on, so. You know, and and what is one of the company's premier golf courses and one of their, one of their best. Financially, it's one of their best golf courses, and they, they took a big chance buying a golf course in the Northwest. Yeah. And so. It's, it's one, it's a gem for them. So they will definitely have an interest, that's all I can tell you, but I I say that with, I have no direct whatsoever. That happens through the general manager of the club, he interacts with the corporation, I interact with him.
Yeah. Yeah, it it's. I think. So I think that we have it, like. So I think that we have it, like. What I what I don't want to do is, first of all, to imply that. They're going to suddenly convert all the golf courses to houses or something like that, like that, that hopefully that did not come through in the in in the document that we have provided. I think that. The strategy that that we had identified with an interlocal agreement that would involve Canterwood. Would mean that they would need to be consulted as part of an annexation, like that would just be part of the process. They 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 would need to know, and they would need to provide their opinion. I think that the challenge with annexation is always determining who, you know, who should decide and and. Like what amount of decision making they should have. And I think the, I think the challenge is that with a petition, they would have a significant amount of. They would have a notable amount of pull, because, you know, there's a certain assessed value associated with golf courses and the facilities. And they would. Essentially have a vote in the process, whereas they would just more be. Engaged as part of a process with the interlocal agreement, so it may. It may actually be another reason for that interlocal agreement, I would think.
Okay, all right, thanks. The and I appreciate the way you laid out the expenses and and. So I have a couple of quick questions about that. One of the major expenses line items was community development, and and I I don't know exactly. What that entails. What does that mean?
Um, so we were, we were generally going by the by the budget categories that existed in the that exist in the city budget. Some of it would be essentially hiring another Carl. But there are other associated. Jobs that would be included in as well, and I'm, I I would need to get back to you with the full list on that. I I don't have that in front of me, but it it. It would be more than just hiring, you know, another Carl or two, it would be, you know, there are other staff involved as well.
Right, so basically it's personnel costs, and and that makes sense to me, and I think that that addresses Bob's, Commissioner Soltis's other question that. He thought it was curious that that the exact same number was in a in a couple of different U G A's, and my assumption when I saw that was, especially what you just said, is that. In both cases, it just represented X number of new officers required to provide the the safety in those areas.
Yeah, so with with, okay, so I I will, I'm going to say this and and. I I will state upfront that we're going to need to change some of the numbers because of this. So with police, that's the reason why there are the same numbers or multiples of the same number. Across different areas. This is also true with some of the other categories as well, like community development, for example. Is based on whole F T Es. And I think that we need to change that a little bit, because I don't think that it takes into account. Some of the incremental costs, and I I I had reviewed it and didn't think that much of it until. Until that question came in by email. And then I realized, you know, to get to that cumulative effect of more F T Es. You know, if we if we annex three smaller F T, three smaller U G A's, that may be the equivalent of. You know. Might be the staff equivalent of one of the larger ones, so. Some of the, some of the financial numbers may change, it's not going to substantively change our recommendations, but just to be aware of that. So.
Okay, well, thank you so much, and and Tom, you will be delighted to hear that that's the end of my list, but before I go to you, if. Commissioner Bradbury, did you have any points or questions that you wanted to make before you have to sign off?
I do not. I I thought the report was very well done, I appreciate the comments. Everybody has been bringing up. One, one of the concerns that has been expressed that I would reiterate is having boundaries that are somehow. Not continuous. We we have some areas that are notched. And and if we were to do something like approach Canterwood in a piecemeal basis, we would have more notched areas than we want to avoid. So I I think that's an important consideration.
Okay.
That's about it.
All right, thank you. And just, Michelle, I'm sure you're going to make a note. For the the minutes when Commissioner Bradbury has to sign off. Okay, Commissioner Brown, you got the floor?
Okay. Greg, I thought your list there was quite comprehensive, and there are several things on there that I noticed myself, as a matter of fact. But what I want to suggest is, and this is primarily for Carl, I think. And that is when this report's presented to the council. I think they would appreciate. Also having a kind of a path forward. Like, what do we do from here? And and I think that 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 may. Be mainly your your assignment. And what I would suggest is that you consider something like each year recommending to the council. Some prioritization of. U G A annexations. And then the following steps, once the council determined a priority. Would be the beginning of a communication plan with the residents and landowners and. In the U G A and et cetera. I mean, you 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 know what it would be. I just think that after the council choose through fifty-one pages of. Of the report, they're going to be saying something like, well, now what? Do I make myself clear there?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Brown, it's a good point. You know, this is something that came up early on when we first started talking about what. We were trying to achieve here with this report, you know, this U G A analysis, and what, what do we want to get out of it? And I think initially, we kind of had that discussion a little bit about like, well, we want to, you know, we want to prioritize our. Our P A A's, our our, what the county calls P A A's, potential annexation areas. And, you know, as we started getting into discussing that. We started to, you know, kind of recognize that that might not be exactly what we do want. What we do want to get out of this report ultimately, because, you know, if. I in 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 us, in some ways, that is what we're getting already, you know, with what's being proposed here in the report, you know, the fiscal analysis. And then looking at, you know, how would we bring these in to the city? That that already sort of prioritizes them in a in a way. If we were to put numbers on them, you know, one through ten, and say, all right, you know, in the next five years, we're going to, we're going to take numbers one and two, and the next. Couple of years, we're going to take three and four. I'm not saying that that's not something we wouldn't do. But I think that would be something that we would do as part of a comp plan update, not necessarily in this report, so we would take. We would take the information in this report and the recommendations from this report, and then take a look at the U G A. And that would be something that we'd go into the comprehensive plan and say, okay, over the next twenty years. Here's, here's what we want the city to look like. That is what the conference plan is, and so by expanding our boundaries and our borders. With this information helping inform that process, you know, now we've got something tangible that we can say, here's why we're doing that. This is why that makes sense to do it this way. Then we would have that, you know, we would put that into the conference plan, and that also then gets into, you know, that the the periodic updated comprehensive plan is a is. Is a massive public process, right? We're bringing all, we're bringing, we want the whole community to come in and weigh in on what they want their community to look like. And and so what you're, what you're just, what what were you describing with the prioritization of the U G A's? Really, that's the place for that to happen.
Well. Then I I if I were, if if I were delivering this report to the council, I'd make sure that they were aware of that point of view, you know.
I, it's a great point, and we certainly will. I think that's, I think it's a really good point. I've made a note, I made a note about it here, that I think as. Part of that discussion with council, maybe it's part of the. The cover sheet or or something along those lines. Also, you know, there's going to be sort of a closeout report. That will, and Andrew, I'll point, I'll I'll let you take this, but I I know that they're. In the scope, there is sort of a a closeout report that would sort of summarize the process that we've gone through to create. This this analysis and this and this report, so, you know, that is something that would certainly, that would. Make a lot of sense to be in, I think, in that report as well, or in that, yeah, in that report.
Let me just restate what I was trying to say. I think the council would appreciate. Input on where do we go from here, once the report is delivered?
Okay.
You know, I I wonder, Tom, to to address that great point, the the, in one of the. Cities that you guys gave as examples, you know, the last time we you you presented to us. And it may have been Bellingham again, I'm not sure, but at the very end of their report, they had, you know, by year and with red arrows. You know, with the with their list of their ten or twelve or fifteen or whatever it was, U G A's. And you wouldn't necessarily have to assign a calendar year, but you could assign it year one, year two, year, you know, after year twenty, and and. With, you know, Canterwood in in year one through three. You know, Peacock Hill, year one through three, you know, and 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 then they had arrows, and it's like, I think they call those. Venn diagrams or something, I forget what they're called, but anyway, that that was very literally, Tom. With big red arrows away forward. In a very tangible, then with with a snapshot on one page, one chart, that says this is what we're shooting for in the next twenty years.
That makes sense, makes sense, yeah.
We'll discuss further with Carl. We have to make sure that we, you know, to add that. We don't want to commit to the city to something that they haven't yet had the appropriate process for and the engagement with the council. And so we need to find that balance to have recommendations that are supported by the analysis and the type of process we've been able to have. But I think kind of what you just said, with summarizing that as part of the deliverable, to explain exactly what the process was, how the decision making was made. And then, so we may, you know, in there, or, you know, talk with the city about taking that other step to kind of think through. That more detail with that more intensive engagement with the council and the leadership of the city.
Yeah, and one other thing is that we do include kind of a next steps element. But it is really high level, and it's not committing to a specific timeline, so. You know, part of it can also be just fleshing that out a little bit more.
I think that's also why our recommendations kind of lean on considering including. Some of this, at least directional thinking in the comprehensive plan update, because that is the public process to think about the long term vision of the city.
Right, and and I I appreciate that, and and I think that that's also a great point, and and. So it makes more sense to me, because really what 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 I think I was referencing was an end product that came from the city council as they laid out their plan. After this deliberative process had occurred, so so I get that point, and I get that nuance, and 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 that makes sense to me, but I I I also. Appreciate Tom's point that, okay, lots of lots of brainy thought, you know, what is it you're actually telling us?
That makes sense.
We got you, we got you on that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brand, did you have any other questions?
No, no, thank you, I'm done.
Okay, and I don't believe we've heard anything, any questions from Commissioner Bennett this evening?
To me, it sounds like everyone's covered everything.
Okay.
I wanted to ask, you know, if nobody else has any questions, how? Before we talk about next steps and things, it's all been really a lot of great information. I've got a bunch of notes here, I I know everybody's been. Visibly writing down a bunch of these things, and we've got a recording of it, too, so. But I wanted to, I wanted to check with you, Chair, and how you wanted to. Did you want to go through Commissioner Soltis's. Comments that he had provided? Or have you already kind of been going through them as we've, as we've been talking here, and you've been kind of poaching from that list a little bit?
I think it's it's more the latter. I I I tried to, some of his. Questions, almost I felt like. That our Burke colleagues said that had read this and actually incorporated some of his questions into into the product, so. And and I was, as you heard, poaching, which was a good word. So I don't think there's anything else on his list unless you see something specifically that I am missing. That we need to bring up or discuss. All the, all the other commissioners have seen it, the consultants have seen it, and and I don't think. We're done. Whipping these folks yet, so.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going to go with that as well, Chair, is I was thinking that, you know, I just wanted to know if anybody had, you know, if we wanted to discuss any of them while we have the, you know, the opportunity in this forum. Or if we want to just take those. And kind of add those to the pile, you know, of other comments and things that we've heard. This evening, and we can, you know, put them in the, put them in the grinder and make this report that much, that much more better. Andrew?
Well, I I I think, I think that with all the feedback. I mean, we can incorporate the feedback into the into the report. Is that what you're asking? Sorry?
Oh, no, I just, I thought you were about to say something, so I was just, I was, I was calling, I was calling on you.
Oh, no, 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 I always, I have a, I have a resting eager to talk face.
So, so then Chair, I guess it's, I think that's, I guess that's it then. Don and Andrew, as far as the. Your, you know, the presentation, the Q and A, is there anything else that you guys want to? Want to ask of the commission this evening, or?
I think, I think that that's pretty much it. I mean, I, I'm really glad to get the chance to talk with you all about this, because. Like we've said, you know, you're the ones that know the community better than we do, and know a lot of the. Know a lot of the things that an outside consultant can't know, like, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the elements of Canterwood that we had discussed during the session, for example, so. Yeah, we we really appreciate your your perspective, so.
I think we, the, we did hear enough feedback that there's some. Andrew has some changes in terms of looking at incremental costs. We did hear a lot, a number of kind of presentation suggestions or recommendations of. Adding more clarity about what's included or how it's considered before it goes to council. So my question back to you, Carl, and the group is, we like to have opportunity to do with the revision so that there is a more kind of council ready version. Do we bring that back to this forum for another touchstone? And so we'll schedule that a future meeting, okay?
That is, that is my recommendation, but this is the, this is the planning commission's. Per view here, so I, you know, I have to, I I will leave it, I would leave it to you, Chair, and the rest of the commissioners to decide if that's how you would like to proceed, but. I think that would be my, that would be staff's recommendation, is for us to go back and take all of this input that you've provided us tonight. And bring you back a revised report for another meeting, another more consideration, and see if you feel more comfortable with. With us taking that up to city council.
Well, I agree. Yeah, I was gonna say, I saw at least one nodding hand. What do you think? And that was John. What, how about? The other three of y'all?
Yep, I agree.
I don't think we need to say it again.
Okay, well, I I I'm in the, in the, let's see it again camp, but having said that, I think, you know. I don't think it's going to take this kind of extensive review, like that that will see a polished product. It it's certainly, I would see it as an agenda item at a meeting, not the agenda item at a meeting.
Yeah, no, no hot seat next time. Gotcha.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we've got two meetings in in December. I think my sense, and Andrew, we can, we can talk more about this, too. We don't have to commit to anything necessarily this evening, but. I, my guess is that we'd be looking at that second meeting in December. I, my guess is that we'd be looking at that second meeting in December to be bringing something back.
Yeah, I mean, Carl, you and I can discuss the changes to the timeline, but, um, I, I, I think, uh. You know, the more time, the better, uh. And just to make sure that we get all the feedback incorporated. So.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Um, okay, Chair. So I guess that's, we'll, we'll, um, we'll be in touch on that. I, I, I don't have anything else necessarily for, for December. Second, um, at this point, but I, but I, but I feel there probably will be a meeting.
Okay.
So it might be, it might be, it might be a real short one, but I think, um, I think we will have a meeting on the second. Regardless of whether we have this ready to go, which I don't think we will. And so my sense is that we either be bringing this back on the sixteenth, or it might be the new year.
Okay. All right then. Well, um. I guess we kind of knocked that agenda item off there at the end. Next items. Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem. I'm, you know, happy, uh, happy to have that out of the way. Okay. Well, uh. Anything else on anyone's mind? Um, if so, speak up. If not, the floor is open for. Motion.
I move you adjourned.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor for adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, aye. The motion passes. The, uh, I'm. Adjourning the meeting at seven thirteen PM. Thank you all very much for your terrific input and a special thanks again to our consultants and the, and your work, Carl.
Thank you, everybody.